Okay, I want to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, February twenty one, twenty two, to order. Pro call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gateley.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedved.
Here.
And trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, thank you. Audience comments? Seen none. Trustee comments? Okay, item one discussion, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is Mama's Kitchen and Concessions Supplemental Video Gaming License. As the board may recall, we did some updates to our liquor code a few weeks ago, actually a couple of months ago. And in there, we created a new supplemental video game license classification. So from now on, anyone who's looking into video game for the first time, I actually has to go through a process to get board approval to have video game machines in their establishment. As such, those requirements include a review by the committee of the whole and then subsequent approval the first year by the village board. They have to submit a floor plan, a business description. They have to have a minimum capacity of fifty people based on fifteen square feet per person. And they have to have a dedicated person to prepare food in a kitchen on premises. Mama's is the first applicant. And they currently hold a Class B liquor license. They're applying for the supplemental video gaming license. They've supplied all the necessary documents. And as of right now, the owner is here, so if they would like, they can come up and present. Dave, we have some pictures in the packet that you can look at their floor plan and you could actually see their kitchen layout as well.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us again. It's been a year for us. But here's our layout. This is presenting to you guys our kitchen. Our kitchen is rather small, but we know that we have to have a full-service restaurant for you guys in order to move through the process because of, at first, our concept was the food truck outside, dining on the inside, and then with going through all of, you know, the changes and having to bring a kitchen to the inside, we decided to go ahead and we're going to get a complete build out. And what you see there is for what we're going to be serving. So our main items on the menu is catfish, barbecue, and our fried chicken. We're the home of the chicken and waffles, so we kind of want to keep it that way. So we're getting a build out tailored to that. Fifty seats there. You got your full hood. You got the waffle makers. You got your, we don't have a stove. We got our freezer, our refrigerator. Our concept right now, because the kitchen is kind of small, is that we could still have our food truck on premise. We do understand that we cannot cook on the food truck because it's full requirement to have a restaurant on the inside. But that would help us with storage, our dry storage and things of that nature, to keep it on the food truck. We can move the food truck from the front of the premises. That's been a requirement we hear due to city laws or whatever, especially if we're going to be cooking on the inside. Anyway, we have a parking slab on the back of the building where we could actually move that to, to continue to at least use it for storage. But we plan to bring everything to the inside, have families, karaoke night. And of course, the gaming is just an added benefit to help us get through the pandemic, so that's something else that we're looking forward to as well. But we plan to bring life to the establishment and to North Aurora. People have been waiting on us and we're excited to get started. We're hoping if we get approval that we can be up and running by May. It's because we're getting notes from different vendors and things of that nature for like the hood and stuff like that, that it could take a couple of weeks to get things in, and then we have to go through the whole process with Fox Metro, with grease traps, and so on and so forth. So that's pretty much our layout. Any questions for me? My team is here with me tonight, you guys. Say hi.
I have a couple of questions. So is it fried chicken?
Yes.
And ribs or fried chicken and fish?
Fried chicken, fried catfish, and then barbecue ribs. So we plan to have the smoker, our smokers outside like we did over the summer, which drew the crowd. We really got a great feedback with the barbecue, so we think that that will definitely bring us, you know, good customers and fun times at our location.
Those are fried catfish?
Fried catfish. Shrimp and grits. We will have a soul sundae. Like, our concept is soul sundays, where you get side dishes, collard greens, candy jams. We tried it on the food truck when we were out there and it worked, and we're excited to keep going. It's just the capacity. It makes sense to move in, to be honest.
You know, I have a question. You say that this, that trailer, that's on the side of the building, right, rather than the back, or?
We can bring it to the side because there's a slab.
Where that side door is over there? Yeah.
Where the side door is.
Is that where it's going to be, the side?
I was thinking the back, but we could do the side, so that-
I'm not asking it. I'm just asking, trying to, could you go back to that floor plan, Dave? Got that. Now, where it says fifteen point six and twenty-five feet, that's the front, that faces the street, correct?
No, that's actually in the back, by our back door.
Ah, okay. All right, got it. I wish, I had a twist.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry.
So is the, I'm not reading the diagram. Where's the front door?
Our front door is-
Food truck is in the back of the, in the back right now, right?
The back, mhm. Where is, there's more pictures because our front door-
That was the only thing I was, I'm just curious as to.
I thought the building's wider than narrow, you know, wider across the front.
Yeah, because that's the back door, because our kitchen is by the back door. Our front door, fifteen point six, is that, oh, there it is, right? Fifteen point six.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the front door. Sorry.
I think it looks good.
I do, too.
Good job, staff, and coming up together with the plan.
Do you know, I got one question about the parking lot. Do you know if that's going to be resurfaced or not? Because I do recall it's like turning into gravel from asphalt, kind of. Is that something that, the building owner?
Yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping, we know that TIF is available for some of this stuff, so we're hoping with the owners and us to go through and get some of the TIF to repave at least.
Yeah.
To get it brought up to standard.
Well, I don't, yeah, I think they have, it needs to be. I don't think it's hoping, right? I mean, that's violation, is it, Mike, or?
Yeah, if it's, I don't know if it's a disrepair, what we define it, but we've had conversations with the property owner and we have discussed resurfacing the parking lot, adding some parking stops, so on and so forth.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
I think it's great.
I think it looks good.
Yeah. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. Yep, thank you.
Great.
All right. Item two, Steve.
Item number two is a discussion on recreational vehicles. This went to the board a little while ago. We were discussing making a slight change to the current ordinance to allow people to have their RVs on their property at six P M on Thursday nights. Currently, it's twelve P M on Fridays through twelve P M on Mondays that they can have it. At that point, the board, it has to go to the planning commission because the planning commission reviews all changes into the zoning code. So it went to the planning commission. They had a good conversation and basically ended up back here with another just open conversation, which Mike will take us through.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. The public hearing was on February first. The planning commission kind of had a similar conversation, the board did. You know, there's all these ideas of how to change things, you know, add a reciprocity period, go to weekends, you know, separate RVs from boats and so on and so forth. But the conversation, there were a lot of ideas that derived from that conversation with the planning commission. But at the end of the day, we kind of stopped and said, hey, this is the language that you're, you know, we're looking for a motion on. And at the end of the day, they did actually vote, recommend approval of the language as it was presented to the village board. So the language you're seeing in the staff report is the same language that you had seen earlier. Just basically, they had asked that we, you know, we relay to the village board some of the ideas that came from that meeting, which are similar, again, to the discussions we've had in the past. So we went ahead and prepared the draft minutes from the planning commission meeting, just for additional context for everyone. But some of the ideas that came about, and again, they're a little redundant, but adding, we heard everything from a twenty-four to seventy-two hour reciprocity period, meaning that you have your weekend times, but then you could add an additional timeframe where someone could have a twenty-four hours, you know, during the week to store their recreational vehicle. So that was one of the ideas that came. Regulating motorhomes separately from, you know, boats, trailers, and RVs because they're all sort of lumped into one at this point was one of the ideas. They were talking about the April and the October timeframes. If you recall in the code, there's a timeframe in April where they have two weeks to essentially pull it out of storage, get it ready, and then two weeks in October to get it ready for winterization. So they talked about moving the times in October and April. You know, because the different, there's different needs with the different types of vehicles, you know. Boats have a different timeframe for winterizations as a RV would. So they discussed that as well, putting in certain holiday exemptions, you know, allowing it, maybe on the Fourth of July, you could have your, you know, your vehicle in your driveway, whatever it may be. And then adding additional time on the beginning of the week. So as Steve mentioned, it would be Thursday at six P M, based upon the current draft language, from Monday noon at this point. But they talked about extending that period maybe to like Monday at six or into Tuesday. So again, there were a lot of ideas that came from the meeting, but in order to kind of get the conversation to a conclusion, they did recommend approval of the, of the language that was brought to the board and which is contained in the staff report.
Are you recommending that we change, add some of these recommendations, or?
It's entirely up to you. Again, these, a lot of them, a lot of them did, were discussed previously at the village board, but those, these items right now, because we brought it back to Cal for discussion, are still up for discussion. What we'd have to do is when we get to some final language, we'd bring an ordinance back. So everything's sort of open at this point.
Well, I think changing the two-week period isn't going to make any difference to anybody, except it'll help the people with the motorhomes. I mean, it's the same two-week period. It's just earlier in the season and later in the season, correct?
Yeah, what happens is, again, you have different people. Someone with a boat might want to, you know, might put it in storage earlier than someone with an RV. So there's different needs because, again, you know, recreational vehicles include boats, trailers, utility, you know, utility trailers. It's all lumped in together, so there's different needs with the different types of vehicles and apparatuses.
So it could be landscape trailers as well, or whatever, any, any type of trailer.
Yeah, utility trailers are brought in with, they're not commercial vehicles in our code, they're recreational.
But they could have it there for two weeks in the spring and?
Well, again, at this point in time, we have, I think, it's April.
Right, right. But I mean, even though it's not a boat or a RV, if it falls in that category, they can have it sitting there for two weeks.
Yep. It'd be April fifteenth to April thirtieth.
So you can have a landscape trailer there, or whatever.
Yeah. The idea being they can bring it out of storage, you know, prepare for the, for the, right, season and then winterize it.
There was some talk-
I was pretty happy with what we came up with at our last meeting. I mean, I think we were all in a consensus that we, we are a residential village and we have traditional residential neighborhoods. So what, could you be more specific as to what the plan commission thinks we should add to what the framework that we had talked about?
They basically, again, what I put on the, on the cover of the staff report were just suggestions that they had come up with, maybe just, just ideas. They just wanted to forward to the village board saying, hey, the village board's going to, they knew we had to further discuss this with the board again. So they said, hey, can you at least just pass this message on to them? So there's further discussion, but they actually recommended approval of the language that is in, is basically in page two of the staff report, which you guys have already seen.
Their discussion was very similar to the discussion you had at committee of the whole. An idea would be thrown out. One or two people would say, oh, that makes some sense. Then one or two people would say, well, what about this? And then it never would gain movement to suggesting an actual change to the ordinance because it sounded like whatever idea someone had, there'd always be a counter to it, and it just kept going back and forth.
Well, after our last discussion, I, I thought about this a little more. And I think where we left it last time was we were thinking moving it to six P M on Thursday to noon on Monday. And so after that conversation, I, I rethought that a little bit and I thought, that's really four days out of the week. And so, and I just feel like, based on the person, the resident who came in, saying when it's convenient or what, I feel like in a lot of ways, we're between a rock and a hard place because if we, we just set it for three days, well, there are those people who travel in the middle of the week. And I, I feel like there's, in a way, there's just no good resolution for everybody. But I, I thought after that conversation that Thursday at six P M to Sunday at nine P M, that's still three days. I'm not an RV owner, motor homeowner, but based on what they said, they're preparing on Thursday, right, to leave on Friday. Most people come back Sunday evening. I, I think that's, I don't really want to extend it more. And then if we're going to extend it another day when there's a three-day weekend, then you have it there for almost a week. And, and I think of the situation, when I think of the Airbnb kind of situation that we have going on, is that once you have it and then you have people who abuse it, it's very hard to pull it back. And then, you know, I know, and Laura and I have talked about it, if that was in my neighborhood, it, it would bother me if I have an RV sitting there four or five days out of every week. So that's, that's how I feel about it. I don't really want to extend it, but maybe just move it back. The two weeks on either end, I'm not sure what to say about that. I don't have a problem moving it to what's more convenient for, for most, who, what is the most, you know, sought-out time? What's better for most? I don't know the answer to that, but I don't have a problem with moving that.
I think the argument with the, the two weeks, I, I could see the idea being that if you move it to the front of April and the back of November, it's still two weeks regardless. It's the same amount of time. It just gives people, if they want to get their season started a little earlier because the weather is nicer in early April, and if the weather's nicer in November, it just gives them a little extra time to get that wrapped up for the year. So it really gives them an extra month of ability to have the RV. So that's the effect on the village, right? It's an extra month of time that an RV could be out there. My suggestion would be simple, just these ideas that are in front of you that the, that they brought up, before we move this on, if you look at those bullet points and you see anything that you want to ask questions or discuss, now would be the time. Otherwise, unless something else gets raised, it would just be that tweak to Thursday night that we're talking about.
What about the regulate motorhomes separately?
That was, I'll take this one, I guess. That was actually, at first, we thought it would be complicated, but in thinking about it, it wouldn't be horrible if you were to take RVs separated and then what you would do is put a, you could put a provision in that says, I should back up and go, what was the risk when we talked about it at the board? Well, the risk was they're all lumped together, right? The trailers and the boats and the RVs. So the idea was if you regulated it separately, does that mean that you can have multiples of items? Like, okay, I have an RV, now I also get a boat and a trailer or one of those? You could simply say, if you have an RV, you still can't have a boat or, it's one or, you can only have one of those three items. So if you have an RV, you can't have a boat and a trailer at the same time. Yeah, I like that idea. But the, the issue with that would be, then someone might come here and argue the opposite and just say, why not regulate boats separately? I have boats. I don't have an RV. Why don't I get privileges to have my boats at more times than an RV? So that's the counter.
And it creates a little bit more, if we're, if we're erring on the side of simplicity, you know, from a code perspective and how we enforce and interpret it, you know, having it all lumped together like this is actually easier. And I don't say that from a perspective of, you know, making anyone's jobs easier, but it's easier for the public to understand. And that's what we try and do. We're trying to accomplish with these codes. So keeping it all together, you're not really, again, determining which one has more time than the other.
Can we just add a, could we just add a line that says, the same thing as it says now about RV preparation during the two-week period, except motorhomes can do it if they elect at this other time? Would that be too complicated?
I, I think the issue still goes back to what's the difference of boating season versus RV? If it's nice enough to go RVing, it's probably nice enough to go boating.
That's not necessarily so, though.
That's probably not so.
Well, the weather changes, too. I mean, you have, you might have, you know, freakish weather on either end, so it doesn't, it's just, it's just a crab shoot at that point.
There, it's, it just seems hard to make a rule that sort of fits and accommodates everything, right? So, I mean, I think that's the challenge. That's why we're here talking about it again, and that's why the commission basically sent it back with the same things that, you know, we talked about here, so.
I just think it's cleaner having one ordinance that covers all that versus going through a handbook and looking at this one up and that one and?
Well, in terms of enforcement, because there's no one, there's not, they don't work during the weekends, right? So that's, that's part of the issue as well. So even if it was, so even if we moved it to Sunday night at nine P M, I mean, I suppose someone in enforcement is, is in on Monday morning, so if they're there on Monday morning, then you could say, well, they're in violation. So even though there's no one in on the weekend, that, that's my thought about it. I'm not sure if that, that works for others here or not, but.
I've also kind of, like Carolyn mentioned, I, I've thought about it more since we've talked about it. And I've, I've actually, I've, I've had some conversations with people as well. I've heard from some people. And quite honestly, I, I'm, I'm on the other end of this now, whereas I would rather not change anything, quite honestly. I don't want to extend any hours. That's, that's my, kind of my thought process after really thinking about it further. I know the only thing we've talked about rewritten here is moving from Friday noon to Thursday at six.
Yeah, and then we also, again, we added some provisions that we brought back, the no parking in the street or over the right-of-way, which is a big one, and then just basically clarifying, you can only have one of the property at a time. So those are the three, those are the three overall big changes.
And those, those items, I'm great with. The two-week period, again, I, if, if people want it moved up or back, if that, if that's what people like, then that, that's fine. But I'm, I'm a little bit more hesitant to add hours, honestly, after thinking about it more. Just again, after hearing, I've heard, I've only been on the board a short period of time, but this is one of the topics that I actually have heard quite a bit about since the last time we talked about it. So I'd like to at least maybe represent those people and, and be on, be on the, the other side of just leaving it as is, as far as the hours go.
I'm just going to go around the table then, don't get everybody's thought. Mark, were you in on that?
Well, I think, wait, let me read it again. So the, the new, the new proposal is from Thursday six to Monday six? Is that the?
Well, right now, we would go from, you can start at Friday noon. This would move forward or backward, depending on you look at it, from Thursday at six P M until Monday at noon is the way it currently reads in the proposed language.
I'm okay with that.
Keep it the same? Oh, yeah, I mean, have the Thursday included? You want that? Todd, you're keep the same?
Yep, I, I'd say keep it the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds good to me. You know, my, my main thing is I want to make sure that, I mean, I hate to say it this way, but at some point, what do we do if we get somebody who wants to have chickens, a boat, and an RV? I mean, we need, these are things that we have had come up. And we need to, in my opinion, and I like Mike's point about keeping it simple, are we a traditional neighborhood resident? I mean, people have the options to live in unincorporated areas, you know, Potavia, Elburn. When you buy a house in a traditional neighborhood residence, there are certain expectations of, of things that are going to be allowed in that neighborhood. So I want to just make sure that we are going to maintain for the ninety-two percent of people who aren't going to have a boat or RVing. Because I'll tell you, I lived in a, you know, my neighbors had two huge pontoon boats, and they would park them like this. And I almost hit a kid on a bike trying to make a, a turn. It was very unsafe for kids walking or pulling out of our driveways. So I, I, I'd love to keep it simple. I think the Thursday to Monday is giving enough concessions. This is a small minority of people. And again, we have to understand we're North Aurora. We're not Elburn.
Right. Well, I, pretty much, I don't know what Todd's, are you mean, keep it the same? When you say keep it the same, you mean?
Don't make any changes to it. Don't make any changes to what we have currently, which is noon Friday to noon Monday. That's, that's my opinion.
Well, I'm in the camp where I think that six o'clock Thursday evening isn't that much more of an inconvenience than to keep it that way. I don't think any more time added to that is necessary, but I'm thinking maybe the change in the two-week thing is something that we could take a look at. If you can somehow figure out how to word it in the most simple style so that people understand it. So that's where I am on it. I don't care if you don't change the two-week thing either, but I would say it makes sense to me to change it for those people. In the meantime, keep everything else the same.
I would just be in favor of either going from six o'clock on Thursday to nine P M. Let's say, that's just a thought I had, nine P M on Sunday, or just leaving it from noon on, on Friday, leave it as it is, instead of making any changes, not the six P M on Thursday. I don't want, I'm in a camp where I don't want to extend it. I think just from an enforcement standpoint, it makes it harder. And, yeah, I would just want to see the, I don't want to see the timeframe increased. So whether that's Thursday to Sunday or Friday to Monday.
Okay, so we got three Thursdays. One, keep the same, and one, one way or the other, so.
So Thursday, so we're all clear. So we'll come back with an ordinance.
And then I think the floating two weeks, I think that everybody's interested in.
Well, before we bring it back, do you want to talk about the floating two weeks?
Okay.
Yeah, so that we actually know what we want to put in the ordinance.
Yeah.
I'm good with the floating two weeks.
How do you?
So wait, wait, wait.
How do you?
When you say floating two weeks-
Well. Change it from what it is.
Yeah, that's what you meant by floating, just changing.
Two weeks for the boats and two weeks for the RV, different? Is that what we're talking about, or with everything?
The only thing that was really brought up with the RVs was just moving it to the beginning of April and the end of November. And then the question came up of boats and why not boats? That's the point I was making. If you do it for RVs, why wouldn't you do it for boats and keep it the same two-week period, I guess, is my issue. I just bring it up because now you're enforcing two different time periods.
Okay, for all-inclusive, not separating.
That keeps it simple.
That's what I was, I mean, it's up to the board, but I just, like you said, if you keep all three of them together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So good.
Good. Okay, so move the two weeks. So now you can have it for a two-week period, April first through fifteenth, and then November fifteenth through thirtieth. Okay. And then just those two other small changes that the staff added to clarify things, which don't really have any relevance on the conversation, sorry.
Right, okay.
So you're going to write it up from six P M on Thursday to noon on Monday?
Correct.
All right, anything else on that? Great. Discussion item number three, Steve.
I feel like this one's, it, it looks long, but it's really, it's not. So as the board, right, might remember, we were talking about lead service lines in town and we're working on an inventory right now to identify the few hundred that we believe we have. And then once we identify them, we eventually have to replace them. They have to go on a program. And, and the board had talked about potentially using federal funding for that through the R program. And in the, in the meantime, there is a new law that occurred. It started on January first, and there might be some emergency situations that pop, pop up, and John's going to talk about that, and that's why we're here.
Thank you. Basically, the, the act that was passed on January first is called the Lead Service Line Replacement Notification Act. And that contains, basically, there's two main components to that act. It's an inventory. And then, like Steve said, a replacement. So the inventory requires the village to identify or target neighborhoods that we believe have lead service lines in them, and then become certain whether or not those lines actually exist. So it'll do that either by reaching out with a letter and sending it to the resident, asking them to look at their own service, take a picture of it, send it to us, and we can help them identify it that way. The second component of this act is basically emergency replacement. So if there was some reason that somebody's service may have broken in front of their house, and maybe it breaks at the B box and our water division responds and we're trying to repair it, if we notice at that time that that service, either side, the private homeowners or the village-owned side, is made of lead, that triggers, triggers a timeframe of thirty days in which that needs to be replaced. Now, for extenuating circumstances, it could be pushed to a hundred and twenty days, but that's only weather-related or if materials aren't available and such, stuff like that. So the state's making a point that it's important and they're very health-conscious about this issue, and they want to make sure that anybody with a lead service line is getting it replaced in a timely fashion. So what, what we are proposing is that we have contractors that we've got pricing from that can replace the service from the water main into the house, ranging from about forty-three hundred to ninety-three hundred dollars. And the reason that's such a big window is because it depends how much copper you're using. So typically, a water main's on one side of the street. So if you're going, if you're living on the opposite side, that's a longer distance and it's going to be a greater cost. Similarly, if you're on the short side, it's less of a cost. One of the other things is it depends on where your water service comes into your house. If it comes in through a basement wall or if you're on a slab and we have to bore beneath your, beneath your slab and then try to guess and pop up in the right spot in your house, it's going to cost a little bit more. So that's why there's that range there. But as Steve mentioned, this item is essentially just asking the board's permission and getting your authorization to allow the village administrator to expend up to fifteen thousand dollars on not only the public side, but also the private side of this replacement project and essentially then replacing the service within that thirty-day window.
So the- I think it's a smart idea. And, you know, it's, we can save some people, you know. We don't want anybody to get poisoned. And I like the idea of using the, the funds for that. I think it's a good investment. Well thought.
So the, the, be clear on this. The reason it's in front of you is that we don't have the program in place yet, the Lead Service Line Replacement Program. It's, it's super complicated and we're putting it together with our consulting engineers. And then, right now, that inventory, which has already started, we're trying to drill that down. And in the meantime, like, this is mostly like, and I hate to say it because we're superstitious at the staff level about water- And in the meantime, like, this is mostly like, and I hate to say it because we're superstitious at the staff level about water main breaks, but if you say it, they appear. And when you go out there and you see that it's lead, right now, we don't really have authorization, like, the village never really goes on private property to fix something. So in lieu of that program where the board is actually approving it by, you know, a resolution to expend funds or anything like that, we don't necessarily have the authorization to just go on someone's private property with their, even with their opinion or approval, because it's an issue of, if we go for one neighbor, we have to do it for all neighbors, right? Anyone who has lead service, now we have to go on their private and fix theirs. So we have money in the budget already, in the water fund for lead service line replacement emergencies, or, or when they, we come across them. All we're asking for is in lieu of that program, that's, that could be backed by federal funds, that we expend village funds out of the water fund when we see one of these emergencies. And just for the record, it could be zero to ten by the time we get this a program. I mean, it could be zero. We have no idea. We just want to make sure you're okay with us going on private property and expending village funds on private property to, to fix them when we see them.
Yes. Absolutely.
I don't have a problem with that. Would they be reimbursed at a later date by a federal fund, or they would just be expended?
We're hoping that because it is federally funded, we believe that those federal funds can be used retroactively.
Okay.
We keep track of them.
Yeah, I think that's important that we have the ability to go, if we have a thirty day timeframe and we meet twice a month, then I think it's important that, that.
And to John's point, my spending authority right now without board approval is fifteen thousand dollars. So in most cases, I would have the approval. Once again, it was just because I want to make sure the board was comfortable with me doing that.
So Steve, can we be proactive in identifying the homes that we think still have a lead service?
Oh, we, we have. So we have a preliminary inventory that was, uh, required by the I P A a couple of years ago. In that, we identified a few hun, it was a little less than a thousand or around a thousand homes potentially that could have it, if I, if I remember correctly. And then from there, but that's just a rough guess based on age of homes and whatnot. Then from there, we started drilling down. And now we're starting to go systematically through each neighborhood that we think has it, and that's what John was saying, you send out letters. Like, one neighborhood we thought was potentially could have it, there are, I think, about forty homes in that neighborhood, zero had it. But we actually were able to verify that. Then they go on the inventory as no lead. So we started, that's what we're doing. You start with the highest number you can, and then you work your way down to a number.
It can be a fascinating process, so it's, you're kind of targeting the older part of town because you know that that's when the lead services were, were put in. So you kind of get clues and piece it all together, and so we think we have a good handle of where everything's located. It's just a matter of confirming it.
Any, any home built before nineteen seventy possibly could have lead leads. I don't know any of that, you know, I don't know when, when they started building, but so fifties and the sixties and, and that era probably where you would find them, right?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you. Item four, uh, leaf collection, Steve?
Thank you. So, uh, we were gonna have an item on the agenda for the village board meeting tonight for a preauthorization of a purchase of a new leaf machine and leaf box, um, which, which is an expenditure of sixty to eighty thousand dollars. And the idea was, uh, once again, it's an equipment issue. If we decide to purchase one, there's only a limited number of manufacturers that make leaf, uh, leaf machines. I think the one that we want, there's only three available right now, and if you don't put your order in now, they could be gone in a couple of weeks. And even if we order them by early March, the lead time is to get them by early October, which is just before the leaf program starts. So the idea would be is we come get preapproval, it would go in the draft budget, and then when the budget gets approved, the funds would be essentially there waiting June first, whenever after we get the machine, we pay for it. As we were doing that, we kind of thought we should probably go, it's been a long time since we probably reviewed the leaf program with the board. Thought it was a good opportunity to just give you an overview of the program that we provide to the residents and make sure that the expectations are still the same from the board, because that drives the decision on whether or not to potentially buy a leaf machine. And John is going to give us a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, essentially, like Steve said, this is just gonna kind of be an overview of, um, of what we do for operations when we are collecting leaves. So there's basically four different options that the, uh, the residents have. Um, they can take advantage of the village curbside leaf collection program, which is the one where we drive our trucks and machines around and, um, vacuum up the leaves that are at the curb. Um, with this program, there's no additional fee there, and essentially, we're just asking the residents to rake the curb, the leaves to the curb. Our waste, our waste holler also, also offers a program group. They offer a bagged leaf program between October and November. There's no stickers required at that point with the program. And should that program, um, should we have an issue with leaf collection with the village curbside leaf collection pro, program, this one could be extended another two weeks, so it gives us a little bit additional flexibility should we not be able to collect leaves because of weather. Uh, third option to the residents is either mulching or composting. Some residents prefer to utilize those leaves for gardening projects or just take advantage of them at, in, in some way that they could use them in the future. And I, I think the last option is hiring a private landscaping company. So that would, that would include a, an additional cost to the resident, but it is also an available service. A lot of times what I see with the program is sometimes people that don't have, um, the, the ability to rake the leaves themselves will hire a landscape company just to rake the leaves to the curb, and then the village will come by and pick those up with the vacuum. So, taking a little bit of a, or looking, taking a look at the, the leaf collection program since two thousand nine, um, the, it's been trending up, basically. We are collecting, on whole, we're collecting more leaves in two thousand nine than we have been, or less leaves in two thousand nine and more leaves in two thousand twenty. The trend line is that leaf collection is going up in, in a, not dramatically, but I expect that in the future with maturing trees and new development, adding trees, that the leaf, the volume of leaves that we are going to collect is only going to increase. So we do plant approximately a hundred trees each year with our tree replacement program, so that on top of new development, we're, we're suspecting that, that, that total is gonna go up in the future. Uh, the program itself, the curbside leaf collection program that the village operates runs for six weeks, it, it runs from mid-October to Thanksgiving week. There's three collections on each side of the river and they alternate. So if we start on the west side at the beginning, the next week, we'll move to the east side. That's the, I think the first week this year was, we, we finished on the west side this year, so. So a little bit about our equipment then. The village currently owns three leaf machines, one of them's, two of them are Benell, and one's a Dinkmar, the, the older machine, the Dinkmar is actually very reliable, um, for being an older machine, but it doesn't have the capacity the other two do. Um, we perform preventive maintenance on these machines in advance of the program every year. And every year, we also experience breakdowns since I've been here. So there hasn't been a, I, I think, a leaf collection season in the last four years where we've had all three machines running throughout the entire program. And it's, it can be a little frustrating kind of supervising the program and just seeing that, because you're only using machines six weeks out of the year and you can't keep them running for six weeks. It says a little something about the durability of those machines. But, um, like Steve said, there's only two manufacturers and we have machines from both manufacturers. And I think this time, we're gonna try to order from the one that we think is a little bit more reliable and, and see where that goes. During the peak of the program, we're running two crews, uh, one crew on each machine. Um, so we'll have, a crew would consist of the operator of the back vector on the back of the leaf collection machine, the driver of the leaf collection machine, or, I'm sorry, the driver of the truck, and then the driver of the second truck. So there's really three people involved in the process, and the purpose is the, the leaf collection machine will fill up the first truck, that guy will drive his leaves then from wherever he is out to Fermilab and dump, and the next guy will back his truck up, and hopefully by the time he's full and pulling away, the next guy is, is back from Fermilab. So we try to run it as a continuous operation on both crews, um, to the best of our ability. Um, when, there are times, um, where we can run three crews, it's difficult sometimes, it can be challenging, but we'll have two crews operating, and then we'll have that old machine, the Dinkmar, just running around in cul-de-sacs. And in that situation, we actually don't have enough physical bodies to, to have two trucks with each, um, uh, leaf collection machine. So we'll just have one guy collecting leaves at that point, driving them off and then coming back. And while he's driving to Fermilab, the other guy's kind of stranded on the machine until he gets back. Or he'll ride with him to Fermilab and back, so. Um, so we do have eight people total in Public Works, and there's three crews, uh, three people in each of those crews. So generally, we have six people out doing leaf collection, and we have one person performing Julie's during that six week period, so that, that person's out doing locates, so they're not always able to join the crew immediately, but they'll do things in the morning, and then once they finish up with their morning tasks, they can join a leaf collection crew. So it, it can be challenging sometimes to staff the program, because we are asking, um, the guys to, at times, we'll be asking them to perform overtime tasks. So in order to stay on top of the program, they'll come in an hour early. We'll have maybe two guys will come in an hour early, and then at the end of the program, we'll basically run until dark. Because at that point, it's not necessarily safe to be doing the operation anymore. But we'll have two guys come in early, and then at least one crew will stay later, um, during the duration of the six week period. So I guess the next, next thing to talk about would be the operational expectations or what I guess staff perceives as the expectations of the program. So, um, basically, on the east and west side, we understand that each, each side of the river is gonna get three collections, and as of now, we've been alternating. So we've been starting on the east side one year and the west side the next year, and that's just because, um, people I guess the, the last collection may be more valuable than the first, and people feel that as the leaves drop, that you're gonna have more chance to, to be able to, um, bring your, a greater amount of your, your leaves to the curb should they not drop late.
John, can I, can I jump in real quick on that one? So, uh, we changed that probably five, six years ago. It used to start off, uh, in many cases where the west side would always, it would always end on the west side. And the reason for that being is the west side is like two thirds the size of the town. So Thanksgiving being, I'm sorry, did I say it ends on the west side? It used to always end on the east side. The reason was because the west side is so much bigger proportionally than the east side of the river, it was always easier to finish the east side in three days on the shortened Thanksgiving week than it would be, you know, enough, enough to do that on the west side in three days is very hard. So what happened was several years ago, we had a massive snowstorm, and it actually covered us, uh, snow-covered leaves in a lot of the east side neighborhood. And there was some complaints that, you know, from residents that, hey, this is always, we're always last, so it's more likely to snow and probably cut the, the program short, and maybe you won't even get our leaves. Why is it always on last? The funny part is, it's kind of a, a flip bag, so we changed it because there's a benefit to being the last pickup, because if you're last pickup, you have the best chance of your leaves falling.
Yeah, it'll be down.
By the end of the, but then on the flip side, you also run the risk that if the snow, a significant snowfall, and that was eight inches of snow if I remember correct.
Yeah, it was.
Comes by, we got lucky that it melted like a week later. If it didn't melt, those leaves would have never got picked up for the year, the program would have been canceled for the rest of the year.
Halloween, it was eight inches on Halloween.
So it's just, that's what happens, and that's why we started flipping it, to try to do our best to, to make it as equal as possible. We just started flipping sides each year. And then
I think the program's great, everybody loves the program, let me tell you. It's a big bonus for the village, people talk about it all the time.
And one of the goals, like Steve mentioned, was to have the program end, um, the week of Thanksgiving, so we try to make sure everything's done by December first. And then at that, after that point, um, the weather begins to change, we could start changing our operations over to, to, um, snow removal and start putting decorations up in her front park and along, uh, along the bridge. On the next slide, you'll see some of the operational challenges that the program confronts, um, on a seasonal basis. Uh, the weather can make it challenging. Surprisingly, rain doesn't always necessarily make it hard to collect leaves. A lot of rain makes it hard to collect leaves, so little rain keeps them down and prevents the wind from blowing around. So it's actually not the worst thing when that happens. Um, the snow definitely makes it hard, and then if the snow hits and it freezes and thaws and ices up, it, the, the storm Steve is referencing, when the guys would bring the machines back to the shop, that it looked like it would, they described it as leaf pudding when they were pulling it out of the machine, because it was just kind of pure, pure aid, I guess, is the best way to describe it. But, so the weather is challenges, um, the equipment breakdowns I've alluded to, there hasn't been a season we've gotten through without at least one machine being down. Staffing, we have enough people right now to, to, I think, functionally staff two crews pretty efficiently. Uh, and I think they do a good job that way. There, there can be, if things were to come up during that time, um, say if there was a, a, a water main break or some other issue that we would have to attend to, we would have to pull off people from the, the, uh, leaf collection crew. And that could drop efficiency a little bit, but those occurrences are rare. The end date, again, i- it's not always necessarily a challenge, but it, it, it's imposing. It, it's a date that we know, I, I think I start sweating a little bit more when I see that there's snow in the forecast at the end of November, knowing that we're gonna, um, be up against it here to get those machines changed over to snow plows real quick i- if there is a snow event, so.
It, it should be pointed out that when you switch over the, the machines and you actually ready a truck for plowing operations, it takes a few hours, if I remember correctly what Brian was, uh, telling me. It takes a couple hours minimum to switch a truck over, each truck from us, from a machine to put the box on, then take off the box, and you have to put the salt box back on, and then you have to put the plow on. So there's a lot of time, we, we own several trucks, so.
How many employees do that for?
In the streets operations, we have eight, uh, eight.
You don't know how many employees does it take to switch a truck over?
That I don't know.
They usually work in teams of two, but I, yeah. Yeah, I think the, the last challenge is really just, um, ending on the west side on Thanksgiving can be tough to do, to get through the, the larger end of town i- in three days. But we also then took a look at, uh, possible ways to improve efficiency. So, um, as Steve mentioned in the introduction, we're looking at potentially adding a, another machine. Not only would that add some redundancy, and hopefully we'd have enough sheen, machines to accomplish the, the program efficiently. Um, but it would also have a, have the ability to run a third crew. Um, if we were to choose to start on the west side of the year, it would, there would be an equity issue. Um, but it would also improve the efficiency of the operation, because we'd have a full week in order to service the entire west side. We could impose mandatory overtime requirements. Um, as I said, now, most of the guys voluntarily are coming in on two hour or an hour in advance, at least a couple guys in the morning, and we're staying until dark. So really, we're getting a lot of work out of the guys. Um, uh, on holidays, I don't think everyone's necessarily thrilled to be working on Thanksgiving, but if, if that's what we need to do to get the program done, that's, that's what we're gonna do. One option, I guess, is to, if we're interested in reducing the volume, maybe we could just use our website or social media to kind of explain the benefits of mulching or, or composting the leaves if people wanted to take advantage of that sort of program. We could offer them some education on that. And then I, I guess the, one of the last options would just be outsourcing the operation altogether. There, there are very few, maybe two companies that perform leaf collection the way we do as a village. Part of the reason, I think, for that is the equipment, the equipment is not necessarily the most reliable, but it's also expensive to have and only utilize over a six week period of time. So, um, contractors are, are more interested in doing the entire program for a village as opposed to just supplementing our service, so it'd almost be an all or nothing type of thing, should we go that route? Um, and, and from, we haven't received, I don't have definite cost figures on outsourcing it at this time. We're looking into the costs, I believe Potavia is doing it right now. So we're gonna try to get some figures from them to get an idea of what that would look like. But, um, it, it's expensive, it'll be very expensive, so. Um, and that, with that, that's kind of a summary of the leaf collection program. As Steve mentioned, in, in the coming weeks at the next couple of board meetings, you may see, um, a, a memo prepared and a presentation requesting the purchase of that leaf machine. And it's gonna be, like Steve said, like a lot of the trucks we're ordering now, it's, there's a long lead time on them. And, you know, if we order, we were told by the salesman, if we order by the end of the next March meeting, he said we'd have a good chance of getting a machine by October.
Yeah, order the machine. It's an extremely popular program in the community, uh, I can say that, and I can also say that the staff does an excellent job. It's an extremely popular program in the community. Uh, I can say that. And I can also say that the staff does an excellent job. You know, I know that uh, a few times it broke down and we also had the, the early snow. Uh, but it, it seemed to work out because the waste hauler was able to, you know, compensate for the spring pickup. But um, I don't think outsourcing is the route to go. I think the, the fellows do a good job and we have the equipment. It's an excellent program.
I agree with Mark. If we already have the equipment, to me, it doesn't make sense to then outsource it when we already have the, some means ourselves. So I agree with that.
I, I just assumed it went without saying that, outsourced. So yeah, I, I don't think that would be the most cost efficient way to do it. Uh, so I'm looking forward to our new, bigger capacity, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I just wanna say, yeah, it's a, people love it, you know, and I, I don't think anybody up here would argue with you, you know, things happen, you know, all these late falls, the leaves are dropping later now because it's warmer and it's just things we're up against and hopefully it doesn't keep you up at night. But it's like, you know, um, we do offer a, a spring cleanup now too through uh, Groot. Uh, people could, if it does end up running into December, first week of the, you know, um, I know that your team worked on a Sunday, I think, uh, this year too. After, was it after Thanksgiving, I think there, but actually into the, that following week, I think up to Wednesday.
Yes.
I think.
And they worked the holiday weekend. They worked that Friday, I wanna say Saturday and Sunday.
I don't think they worked Saturday, but it was Sunday, yeah. But you know, it is a lot of, it's a challenge. I know it's um, I've heard all, you know, the stories and like I said, it sounds good to work into December, but when you switch trucks over, you're doing the Christmas lights. You know, it's not as easy as, you know, it just work later. I mean, it'd be nice to have a truck that wouldn't be used for snow that we could just kind of dedicate with one crew if nothing else. But you know, people do love it and, and your team does a great job. I mean, and it's, it's a nice thing, but that's just um, you know, dealing with the weather, it's just tough, you know.
Just one quick point of what you just said. Um, we're getting to a point now where over the years, we've, we've purchased new trucks, but we used to resell all of our five yard dump trucks. And we got to a point where we actually have one that we've kept um from our newest truck that we just got uh, a month ago. We now have one that we use as backup when snowplows break down during operations. We actually use it as a backup now. And we have another truck on the way in the next few months. And then the plan was to keep at least two trucks for the first time. We actually have potential redundancy in trucks.
Yeah, I just thought we should have that backup.
We just didn't have enough people or trucks to do it. And now we actually got to a point where we have enough trucks to actually keep some trucks. And to your point, we would just attach potentially a leaf machine and, and leave it hooked up if possible.
Right, right, so. Good job. Keep up good work. All right, anything else? So motion to adjourn to exec session for land acquisition.
Motion to adjourn to exec session.
Go in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're opposed? All right, thank you. Going into that. See you, Joe. Thanks for coming.
Joe, thanks. Thanks for the parking lot.